Wait, wait. Wait, I'm super tired.
Do you believe in me?
Have they June, we need, we need more capital.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, I wouldn't be right.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's how I go to sing. There you go.
David.
Bill, where were you? How are you doing?
When was your baby born?
Um, March 11th.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was a little campaign I didn't hear about it. Sorry, man. Congratulations.
All right, don't worry about it. I also assumed. I just assumed I thought I had.
Who's on first?
Great. Is Gonzalez going? Suppose. Is Gonzalez going?
Just.
She should be on. She hasn't. Already.
Unless she's using another phone.
She might be using.
Make sure your mic is on, George. It's all.
Okay, Heidi, we're ready. Okay. Call the role, please. Mayor Mitchell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Santin.
Here.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Here.
Councilman Fajet.
Here.
Councilman Vasquez.
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Okay, thank you. All stand, please, for the invocation by Councilwoman Bravo.
Glorious God, you promised to open doors of blessings and abundance for your people. We ask that you would work mildly with, with us this evening. Come upon us and cause us to have a productive meeting. Lead each one of us so that we can make fruitful contributions at this time. Enable us to think and strategize in ways that will achieve great results. Purify our thoughts and motives so that each one of us will enter this meeting, desiring the good of others in the pleasure of your name. Amen.
Amen. Uh, we would like to ask the scouts that are here with us tonight, if you could come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, scouts. Hey, welcome everyone to our city council meeting of Monday, May 22nd. To those of you that are here in the audience, it's so nice to see so many faces. And um, to those of you that are joining us virtually, um, welcome. We're going to get started with awards and presentations, but I wanted to first with the council's consent, um, switch a few things around on the agenda. We are going to defer item four A, uh, for a future meeting in June. Senator Avila and Representative Rizzo couldn't make it here tonight. And then I wanted to ask to move item, uh, 12E, which is a presentation by Clear Point Strategy, under awards and presentations. If no one has any problem with that. Let's see if there's anything else.
Mayor, you said 12E.
12E. Yes, so that we'll move that under. It's a presentation, so we'll move it under presentation. All right, so let's go ahead and get started and we'll start with, um, recognition of the Miami Springs students, the Silver Knights nominees. We're really excited. These are the Miami Springs Senior High Silver Knights nominees. And um, I think we all know, um, how prestigious, uh, even to reach the nominee level. Um, this is something that's a highly respected award, not just in South Florida, but throughout the country. Um, colleges recognize it, um, organizations, uh, academic organizations other than just colleges and universities recognize this. So we're really, really thrilled that we have several Miami Springs Senior High students who are Silver Knight nominees. And we want to, um, take a moment to deny to recognize them. If they would come forward, I'll call your names. Tyrell Carter. Maria Martinez. Isabel Del Chario. Denise Romero. Brittany Perez. Jordan Perez. Natalie Quintana. Maria Lorenzo. Brittany Walken. And Lorena Romello. And um, I know Karina, you're here. Um, is there, would you like to speak? Tell us a little bit about the, the nominees and the Silver Knights, or is there someone else from this? I know, uh, Principal Gonzalez couldn't be here tonight. Tell us a little bit. Okay, come on up.
Hi, I'm Missy Menes. I'm the cap advisor at Miami Springs Senior High School. And these kids, um, were each nominated for a different category. So, uh, well, these are the four that are here. We have a few that are on their way, but they're stuck in some sort of traffic. So they're all coming actually from.
Okay, come on in.
Um, so the kids work really hard and it's a big community service project that they work on all year. And they're all nominated for different categories. So Tyrell was nominated under athletics. Denise was under, um, general scholarship, Brittany journalism, um, Maria science and Isabella English. So they worked really hard on it and it's a, it's a great recognition.
Wonderful. We are so proud. So we're going to take some photos with you. I'll let Councilmen Fajet through the honors and Phil Principal.
Sure.
Okay. So the ones that, um, will give you the plaques for the students that couldn't be here.
Brittany Press. Tyrell. Denise.
Okay, and these will. And, um, just as you're proud of yourselves, just that you've made your family proud, your school proud. I want you to know that you've made Miami Springs proud. You've made our city proud. You've made all of us on the council, all of our residents proud by your achievements, by your hard work. Um, something that we always say is one day we will be sitting in the audience and some of you will be up here as our elected officials, um, city council, as senator, president, who knows? So, um, congratulations on the hard work. We know it takes a lot of effort to do this and to, you know, this is just the beginning. You keep going. We expect to see really, really great things down the road for you continually. All right.
Now, now you're telling me he's got to go out early. You know, he's had two years. He's only going to play one more.
Yeah, he's in this class, so.
Okay, um, I'm going to move up, uh, the yard of the month because I'm not sure if, um, the family is here. Is, um, Mr. Salome here for the yard of the month award? Well, we'll get the award to him, but, um, the yard of the month for May is 1200 Ibis Avenue. Mr. Jacob Salome. And, um, we're really, really, we have certificate for them. Um, please, if you get a chance this next, you know, few weeks, drive by and, you know, just, um, take a look at the yard. Um, it, we're really, really grateful for all the residents that beautify their yards because they make our city beautiful and they encourage other residents and, you know, neighbors and stuff to also get out there and, and make their yards beautiful. So if you get a chance, drive by 1200 Ibis Avenue and just check out our yard of the month for May. And thank you to the Parks Board, um, for every single month their, uh, members are the ones that go by and, and select the yard of the month and present, uh, make that recommendation to the city council. Our next agenda item is, uh, we have, the scouts have a presentation to make. Jim, and your scout troop number is, I always.
Three, three.
Three, three, four.
Come on up, don't be shy. All right. Come on up, come on, come on up, come on up, come on. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilmen. I'm, stay up here, stay.
I think they think they're blocking us.
I'm James Holt in the Scout Master of Troop 334 here in Miami Springs. And we have had the pleasure, ever since I've been Scout Master since 2014, of working with Mr. Alonso, the city manager. And he's been extremely easy to work with as well as the council. And we wanted to give him a little appreciation, a little, a little thank you for everything he's done. Um, I've never had a meeting with him that I've walked away disappointed. He's always been open to all of our ideas, to all of the different scout projects, Eagle Scout projects that have had to, that have occurred on city property, um, and helped us with those. So we are extremely grateful to Mr. William Alonso and would like to say thank you with this. Hold it up there, perhaps, a plaque, uh, of appreciation and a little Yeti camping coffee cup for you there. So we had all of the scouts that are currently in 334 and a couple of the Eagle Scouts, uh, sign it for you. And, uh, so we hope you, we hope you remember us as we will remember you forever.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We were working on the project, right?
Yes, sir. That one and this one right here. He's working, we're working on his project too. Yep.
Photo.
Maybe we could, come on, get up here so we can get a picture.
To continue our presentation, William. We have the city, that's the scouts. I, I just want to say something that, and thank you, um, scouts. Um, Troop 334 and Jim and, and then the other Scout Masters. Um, but what you describe is just something that I know, um, in all the years I've been on the city council. That's how our city manager has been. He tries every single request from residents, from civic organizations, from any kind of group that reaches out to him, uh, with any kind of, um, of idea, suggestion, asking for help, um, he facilitates it right away. He always has such an open mind and such a helpful spirit of trying to figure out a way that he can make it happen. Um, and that is the nature of the city manager that we've been blessed to have for many, many years. So with that said, we have, the city council has a presentation recognizing our city manager, William Alonso, for his dedicated 17 years and three months, who's counting? I know he's been counting the days. Of service of, um, there's so many words. Said this before here at the city council meeting and in other places, but I tell you, if I had to try one word for our city manager and, and just bring it down to one word, mine would be integrity. I have never worked with, in all my years, working with the county, with the state, over 30 plus years, and then being here at the city council, I have never worked with anyone who has more integrity than this gentleman sitting here to the right and more, um, just a sense of complete responsibility, dedication to his work, um, honesty, fairness. It's just all rolled into and the fiscal, um, expertise that he's brought to our city for all these years of, of getting us out of years and years ago of a very serious situation to where now we have, um, a very impressive surplus in our budget. And he's done this, um, serving our city as finance officer and city manager, uh, saving us the need to be paying for a finance director all these years, which, um, is a substantial cost that we are now incurring. So, um, with that said, um, I'll let the rest of the council, if there's something you'd like to say and we want to present you with, we have a certificate of appreciation presented to William Alonso, city manager and finance director in recognition of the 17 years and three months of dedicated service to the city of Miami Springs. And a proclamation, and I'm going to read the proclamation because, um, every, um, word on here merits, uh, being said for the record. Proclamation by the mayor of the city of Miami Springs. Whereas William Alonso is retiring from his duties as city manager and finance director for the city of Miami Springs, concluding a distinguished career in public service. And whereas for 17 years, William has demonstrated exceptional leadership, unwavering commitment and a tireless work ethic in serving the city of Miami Springs in fostering growth and ensuring the welfare of our residents. And whereas in May 2004, William began his career as Miami Springs Finance Director, where he has been instrumental in lowering the millage rate and replenishing the city's reserves, which had been in a $300,000 deficit prior to. And whereas in August 2016, William Alonso was named city manager after four years as assistant city manager and finance director, and almost six years prior to that as the city's finance director. And whereas during his tenure as city manager and finance director for the city of Miami Springs, William was responsible for many accomplishments, including but not limited to the completion of the Curtis Mansion restoration, the new community center, the new aquatic center, the new adult community center, the Westward Drive pedestrian bike path, as well as guiding the city through four hurricanes and the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas William's retirement marks the end of an era. While we bid him farewell from his official duties, we celebrate his legacy, his immeasurable contributions and the indebted mark that he has left on our city. Now therefore, I, Maria Boynton Mitchell, Mayor of the city of Miami Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 31st, 2023, as William Alonso Day in Miami Springs and in observance thereof. Congratulations.
I have received seven consecutive unanimous votes of confidence from this council and prior council. And that will always stay with you. And I want to thank you, Mayor.
Council.
And all the prior councils I worked with.
And one of the things that we were taught is always leaving place better than you found it. When you're camping or visiting a site or something, and I'm just one city manager that by far has left our city much better than we found it. And we're very, very grateful.
Okay, um, so we'll move to, um, the presentation by ClearPoint Strategy. And that was something that Councilman, um, Vice Mayor Santin, you had, uh, requested. So do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Uh, I mean, uh, Robert will probably go a little bit more into the presentation, but it's a, it's a platform that they kind of automate the strategic planning process. And, uh, you know, allows it to streamline it. I guess it'll boggle down a lot of stuff that sometimes happens in these type of, uh, processes. And less is, you know, waste less time and more transparency and so forth. And they'll kind of explain what they've done to other cities. They've been in business for 25 years. I think they're, they help like Fort Lauderdale, Coral Springs and Hollywood. So I think it's something that we might, um, you know, have, uh, interest in.
It'll give us an idea of the kind of ser, of this kind of service that companies can provide if we're, okay, wonderful.
Awesome. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you so much. And thank you very much, Vice Mayor Santin. Um, also just wanted to say congrats to all you who received awards tonight, as well as to the scouts of Troop 334. It was really great to see all that hard work recognized. And for City Manager, uh, William Alonso, wishing you a happy retirement. And it was really cool to see all of the great things you've done for the city, recognized here as well. Um, so I know Jorge just gave a pretty good overview about what we do here at ClearPoint at a high level. Um, just to speak to that a little bit, we currently work with a lot of local governments in your area. So we work with City of Miami, City of Miramar, City of Hollywood, Lauderdale Lakes, Fort Lauderdale, Pompano Beach, Coral Springs, uh, Tamaraq and a lot of others to really help them automate the process of implementing, managing and tracking progress made on their strategic plans. And also provide a public facing dashboard so that citizens can really remain informed and engaged with your strategic plan and what's going on in that sense. Um, so I'm, I do have just a demonstration up that I was going to share my screen for you all. So you can take a look at the system live here. Um, so I'm going to go ahead and share. And are you all able to see this all right here?
We see it.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So this is just a, uh, sort of a demo environment that was built out to give you a sense for how a lot of our local governments are using the tool here. But what we have and what I'm going to walk you through is just this, uh, fictitious city called Metropolis and how they're using ClearPoint. So right on this homepage here, we can see Metropolis with their mission and values. And then when we scroll down, we have more information regarding their strategic plan. So in this case, they have five different priority areas that they're operating across. And underneath those, we can see their various objectives or high level goals they're working on, the metrics they're tracking that link to those goals, as well as projects they're undertaking to drive forward progress in these goal areas. And if we scroll down a little bit, we can also see that we're able to break it down by department. So if you have various departments that are, have their own kind of plans that they're tracking, that may be linked to your strategic plan, we can see more information on those as well. So here I'm just going to go ahead and click into Parks and Recreation. So in this case here, we're able to see a dashboard that displays a little bit more information on specifically how Parks and Recreation is performing. Here we have a measure dashboard showing some important metrics they're tracking. We can see the data and how that's trending over time. Can also get that nice qualitative piece of it there to provide a little bit more insight into that performance. And then if we scroll down, we have specifically how they're progressing across different initiatives that they're undertaking. So like, for instance, here we have Metropolis Fitness and Bike Trail. We have the owner who's overseeing this project, two collaborators working on it with him, as well as a percent complete, an end date, the priority, and then that qualitative piece with that analysis as well. So on any of these two, we can kind of drill in further to get more information. Uh, so like if I was just to click into financial health and economic vitality, here, this is just a page dedicated to that goal that provides me a little bit more information. And I'd be able to drill even further into like a measure here and really easily track that quantitative information with some nice visuals on it. Um, so we are also able to basically integrate with certain other systems that you may be using internally to pull data indirectly. We can also integrate with Excel to push data indirectly into our system here. Uh, and then really it kind of automates the process because all of these visuals get updated directly when that data is input uh, and gives you a nice sort of snapshot of how you're performing. So while this would be like a singular metric, we're able to also create some really nice dashboards that show how these are performing at a higher level. So if you have like an important, for instance, council report or board report that you're putting together, you may only want to see how specific measures are progressing and performing. Here we have an example where we filter down just to grab specific metrics and how we're performing across these metrics here. So it really allows you to very efficiently kind of track your strategic plan and report out on that to any sort of audiences that you would want to report out with. Um, but then something else that's really nice is we can put all this together into one nice PDF document that can be automated and scheduled to go out to any key stakeholders. So whether that be reporting to council or just reporting internally to various department heads. And an example of that here is just in this quarterly board report. So we would be able to automate this to be sent out to any relevant recipients on whatever cadence we're reporting with. So in this case, we just have a quarterly board report here. And we can see it just generates a PDF document with all of the various pages that we would want to report out on here. Um, so just kind of displaying that in like a nice visual format here with this PDF as well. Something else that I did just want to show you here, and I am going to keep this pretty brief because I know we're on a tight schedule here, but just an example of a public facing side of it. So this is kind of all more internal. Here, this is just an example of another client we work with, Fort Lauderdale, who is publishing information directly on their website so that citizens can view and interact with what they're doing. So we have a lot of local governments doing this. And in this case, these are all custom built, uh, by ClearPoint as well. So we would work with you to really build this out and make sure it has all the information you're looking to report out with, but you can see there's six main priority areas here and can click into any to get more information on them. So this is something that the public would be able to really easily go to and interact with to see how they're progressing across their plan. So here we have like a measure with the measure description. If I want to get more information on capital improvement, project funds being spent, I can click into this here. And I have some more information, uh, with this kind of visual chart, why this measure matters, the methodology, the target, some analysis for the period on why it's performing the way it did, uh, et cetera. So really, uh, I, I, I was sort of in touch with a few of you and I'll definitely follow up over email. I just wanted to kind of show this at a very high level as far as what our system does. There's a lot more functionality that I think I should go into during one of your strategic planning workshops. Uh, but I just wanted to kind of present this at a high level to you all on the council, just so you could take a look at it now.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any questions? All right. We greatly appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You're open.
Good night. Okay, so, um, now we go to open forum. Do we have anyone signed up at open forum?
No, Mayor, we don't.
And virtually either?
As well.
Okay. So let's move again, uh, to the approval of the May 8th regular meeting, uh, minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve 6A.
Okay, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Our next agenda item, we're going to defer 7A. Um, Mr. Watson, that was going to make the report, is unable to attend this evening. So we're going to defer that to, uh, the June meeting. And so we have, uh, agenda item 7B is a report by our Educational Advisory Board Chair, Lurgia Olivo. Hi, welcome.
Um, I want to thank you for allowing me to take the time to, um, provide you with updates today. And I also want to take, uh, thank my colleague, Eileen Vega, who is here to support me and answer questions. She's been on the board longer than I have, but um, the members of the board are very grateful for the opportunity to serve on such an important board. Um, knowing that we have the chance to make impactful recommendations towards the improvement of education of our kids here in Miami Springs. Um, the first and most notable update is the election of myself as the new chair of the board, um, after almost two years without a formal chair. Um, I'm honored and humbled to be serving in this role, and I hope to do a good job steering the board forward this upcoming school year. Um, another update, the board members have more intentionally scheduled our meetings, um, so that they fit in with the school year and therefore, uh, we have more potential to be timely um, and provide, um, effective recommendations to the council. Um, our new schedule has proposed meetings in September, November, March and May, uh, taking into account the school quarters, testing and the holidays. Uh, with this new schedule matching the school year and also being arranged and published well in advance, um, it's our hope that the attendance at the Education Advisory Board meetings improves, which unfortunately lately has been, um, lacking. So, um, another recent discussion was the option to hold the board meetings on location at the local public schools instead of in council chambers, uh, with hopes that by doing this, we as a board representing the city, um, can better connect to the administrators, to the teachers and to the parents at the local schools. Um, we can gain a better understanding of what recommendations might be best, and we can have more of a presence in the community. We think that would be a great, um, chance to really see exactly what's happening, not just be sitting, um, in these chairs. Um, we also discussed finding ways to publicly share information regarding new partnerships within the schools um, and some of the wonderful initiatives in which they are participating. For example, we just learned at the last meeting that the high school is moving forward with an aerospace program for the next school year. Um, and this examples like these are really interesting, really innovative things that are going on, uh, within the Miami-Dade Public Schools. Um, we need to find ways to share this a little bit more, uh, widely and more effectively in order to encourage Springs' parents to, um, to have their kids in our schools, right? Uh, this is one of the benefits of living in this wonderful, small city. Our schools are right here and our kids can go to school right here. Uh, last meeting, we also had the chance to hear from newly elected Miami-Dade School Board District 5 Vice Mayor Danny Espino, um, who also happens to be a Miami Springs resident. And we hope that once he settles into his role, that he takes some time to visit the neighborhood schools um, and meet with the administrators and that together we can work to make some continuous improvement recommendations in the schools. Um, as a board, we are really looking forward to working together when we reconvene in September. We're encouraged with what we're seeing from the mayor and the council in moving, um, a lot of initiatives and recommendations forward, um, such as the Recreation Commission that we saw that there's a survey currently going on in the weekly newsletter, um, to get feedback from the residents. And we want to be able to make recommendations like that. Um, and personally, I'm very excited to formally, uh, be chairing this board. I am the mom of a four-year-old who will soon be joining on the school system. And I really find the mission and the significance of the board very, very important. This ends my updates. If you have any questions.
Richard.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank you for your service. And thank you for your new position as Chair of the Committee. I recently became aware that there's a vacancy. I will be appointing someone very soon and, and making sure that you guys are fully staffed, um, moving forward in the next academic year. Um, just had a couple of quick questions. Um, what in your estimation, in your summation, is the reason why you were having problems getting quorum sometimes? Was it individual schedules or when the meetings were held or?
In my opinion, um, the getting all five of the board members here at the same time was very tricky. Um, we all have very, uh, varied positions in different areas. Um, in K-12, I personally work in higher education. So getting everybody here at the same time, um, was a little bit tricky. Um, we also were, you know, we didn't have the schedule set in advance. And so like when we tried to schedule it, it became a little bit tricky, um, with a short amount of time to get people, um, present. But now that we have them set for the year, I think you can kind of just pencil it in on our calendars month in advance and be ready.
You work in higher education?
I do.
Where?
I work at FIU. I'm a, um, professor at FIU.
Wonderful. Well, I'm a retired history professor from Miami-Dade College. Uh, as a resident of the city of Miami Springs, my wife and I, um, our, our, our daughter and son are all products of the public school system. She spent more hours than probably she'd like to remember on all the PTAs and the ESACs, and I attended as many PTA meetings as possible. So, um, I'm really thrilled that, uh, you know, the committee is, is, is reconvening and has a plan for the next year. Please reach out. And if you need anything, we'll be there. I think the idea of moving the schools, the, the meetings to a school may actually um, be a good idea, but I don't know what rules of the commission would require them to still.
Not sure. I, I, well, I think that the, um, challenge there is that they have to be recorded, right? So there has to be so.
They kind of need the infrastructure of this room.
Right. Um, but it's certainly something that can be discussed and as long as it meets the requirements of, you know, what the city clerk needs for recording, um.
Well, I think the idea is great because if you have a local meeting at a school, I mean, a commission meeting at a school, um, there's a possibility that more parents might attend and others may attend. So, um, but anyway, good luck, uh, good luck. And congratulations again. And congratulations for staying on.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I make a recommendation? So before I was on the council, I was on the Educational Advisory Board. Um, and I know that there's been, uh, and I nominated, once I, once I started running, then I, I stepped down from that board and I, and, uh, and then when I got in, I put somebody in my place. But I know that the purpose of the Educational Advisory Board, uh, is driven by the contact between Dade County Public Schools and the city. But I know that as a courtesy, when I was on the board, when, and I know that meetings have been hard to, to come by in, in the last year and a half. Uh, but if you guys did have a meeting, I would encourage you guys and, and maybe Erica, it, it just has to come from your office with our direction to reach out to ISIC Academy and to AIE and to, because they're, because when we talk about the benefits, we talk about like our schools in the community, right? But, but we're not singling out just the public schools. I think that as a, as a courtesy, like I know Blessed Trinity is in BG, but we, in terms of schools that are serving this community, ISIC, uh, serves, uh, quite a few and AIE and Blessed Trinity. And I know that when they have been invited, they have been very, uh, glad to be there to kind of come together and be part of the, of the thought process. So.
I agree with you. And I, I think, uh, two or three years ago, we asked that all the schools be on that list, all of the schools here. So if that's not happening, we need to make sure it's happening again. Um, Blessed Trinity, I know was invited and the charter schools were invited to the meetings. And it's just an announcement of the next meeting and asking them to, um, so let's check if that's, if we're not doing that, I know that was something that we had agreed to, um, probably three years ago before the pandemic of.
And to my knowledge, they, they, all the schools are invited.
Okay, all right. I, I believe that they are. Okay.
Well, I like to.
And then the other, I'm sorry, one second, um, Councilman, is that, um, and we've been letting all the boards know this, um, there may be times that we ask you to look into things, but again, you have, you can meet, you know, um, please know that you have our support. Whatever issues you want to look into, that you want to discuss, that you feel you have our support, you know, you don't have to wait for something from the council to look into it. Um, your advisory board members, um, so anything that you feel is pertinent to bettering the education of the students here in Miami Springs, of the schools, public and private charter. Um, you know, we want to know whatever we can do. So please feel comfortable. You don't have to wait for once a year to come, give our report. Anytime that you, during your meetings, that you come up with something that you would like to make recommendations to the council, you do it through the city. Who sits on, is it, uh, Juan or Sandra? You ask Sandra to, you know, to bring it to our attention at the next council meeting and it will be an agenda item so that we know, um, because we want to support you as much as possible. We're here to support you and it's, um, we appreciate greatly your time. I think it's wonderful that now you're meeting twice in the fall and twice in the spring. So that, um, should alleviate that, that problem of trying to get a quorum in the past. And one last thing that I'd like to, and then I'll let Councilman Vasquez, is, um, our public schools. Um, whether it's right or wrong, uh, people judge communities by the quality of their public schools, but not necessarily quality by the rating. That's just how it is, whether you have kids in school or not. So our goal, at least. So our goal, at least my goal, and I'm I'm sure the rest of the council feel likewise, is that all the public schools in um Miami Springs are A. And what we need to do to get there, because I don't believe that that's the case, in you know, particularly, I guess, with the middle school and. High school and I and I know that middle schools tend to be the more difficult of that, but. Um that should be our goal. So whatever we need to do, um you know, from our part, from the council to support that goal, please let us know.
Thank you so much.
Councilman.
Yeah, I I I just want to second. Um Councilman Fahad's uh recommendations and would add that, yes, uh all of the schools that he mentioned, and I think Loyola was in that that list too.
Loyola is also.
Loyola, you can start mapping out the next two years of of locations of meetings and I this way, uh folks know ahead of time. And uh I think that's a great idea. Um and that uh it also is is our commitment, right, to support the schools. Uh the public schools are, you know, are supported by by the county, but uh you know, a lot of the students are our students. Our kids, and so we have a definite interest, whether it's public school or charter school or any other school. We have a vested interest in the success of our children and supporting every which way we can. Within the realm of our power and authorities. Um and uh so I'm glad you guys met with the uh with the commissioner and and that uh. We you continue going, you know, enjoying that um the good work that you're doing. Um you have the whole summer to get ready. You're not off the hook. But anyway, congratulations again. Thank you.
Mayor, just to be, just to be clear, because I I think that uh Councilman Vasquez brought it up and I think you caught on. I I think he said about going to different locations. I think they're gonna need to be here in the dais. Because there has to be a, you know, representatives from the city, from city staff, and so I believe it has to be here in.
You weren't, and you weren't recommending that they be at.
No, I was not. I was not.
And I tend to think. And and again, if that's a possibility or if occasionally you want to do that because there's something special at, you know, say, the high school or something, but I tend to think that that might. Polarize it so that the only ones that attend are, you know, from that school and they figure it's not the other school, but. We'll leave that up to you to work with the city clerk if there's a special meeting that you wanted to hold at a certain school. I think overall, it's probably best to hold them here for because part uh partial. Pri- primarily because of the recording requirements that we have. Yes, Councilwoman.
And that's what I ask.
Would it be possible, I mean, since you can't do those off-site meetings, I don't know if it's uh if it's possible for them to maybe. Host their own individual workshops to then regroup when they come back on the dais. Or 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 that would be also considered something that has to be recorded?
As somebody that was on that board, I think the problem that uh we encountered a lot is just that at the last minute, as a school administrator. The our lives are are crazy. Uh at the last minute, you wouldn't have a quorum because some people just couldn't make it. I mean, it it really was like it would be planned and then it didn't happen. So I don't, I don't know if that's going to be made any easier by changing the venue. I think I think it's just a commitment. I I think that. It's good that you're planning it ahead, but as long as you're, you know. As you just try to keep the keep the appointments, keep it keep it on their on their schedules.
We're trying to see what we can do.
Yeah.
Rules and the resources.
No worries. No worries. Thank you. Thank you for for coming.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. And Eileen, thank you for all the work that you've done for so many years, also on the board. We greatly appreciate it. Okay, so um public hearings, we have none. We'll move to the consent agenda and we have four items on the consent agenda. Does anyone have any item that they want to pull out? For discussion? Okay, um is there a motion to accept?
Motion to move nine, A, B, C, and D.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, um. I just wanted to mention with the shade canopies, and this is after we've already voted. Um is that one of the reasons that we're putting in the shade canopies, I know I've had some few few people ask. Me about that and one of the reasons that we're putting in the shade canopies in Prince Field. Is because we had all of those Australian pines lining both um ends of the, what is that, pane and.
That's archy.
Right, and that provided an enormous amount of shade. Since we removed those um Australian pines to provide parking there, there is no shade. So um the the parents need a place and we have shade trees at Beebe Field and other areas where you can kind of find a little shade oasis. So this'll um provide that also. Okay, um let's move to Agenda Item Ten, A. Appointment of a resident to the Pension and Retirement Board, and we discussed this at the last meeting. We were told that um. Uh one of the members of the city's Pension and Retirement Board has to be appointed by the council. I would like to um uh. Well, can I nominate Roger or do I have to ask? Do I have to mention someone and then?
Yeah, I think you would have to mention.
Okay, I'd like to mention someone who um ha- is interested, is willing to serve. And is extremely highly qualified. Um it's um we're also blessed that she's a Miami Springs resident. But it's Jennifer Moon. Jennifer is a longtime for probably over twenty years with Miami Springs resident. She's the former Miami-Dade County Deputy Mayor. Um she's also former Director of Miami-Dade County's Office of Management and Budget. So extremely qualified and right now she's currently Miami-Dade County Chief of Policy and Budgetary Affairs. So um and we're uh very lucky to have her in our community, so this is an example of tapping into. The professional expertise that we have um in our community to help us and she's, I reached out to her, she's willing to serve on the the board.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we appoint Jennifer Moon to the Pension and Retirement Board.
One second.
All right, is any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Um we'll move to eleven, A, um and I'll let uh William discuss this resolution or Tammy?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Um this is a resolution uh approving a contract with Calvin Giordano Associates for planning and zoning services. Um as you know, we have a vacancy in the City Planner Department as of last Thursday. Um so um Heidi and uh Tammy and I have been working with Calvin Giordano over the last few days to work on an interim agreement. Uh where they would come in and do uh the day-to-day planning uh services as well as any special projects that council may have. Uh in the future. Um the reason we picked Calvin is, as you know, in back in twenty eleven, twenty twelve. Uh and I sent you a lot of information uh about those, the agenda minutes and all that from those meetings as well as their presentations. Uh back in twenty eleven, there was an ad hoc committee of residents that was uh appointed and they worked for about a year. Uh along with Calvin Giordano and with City Council in establishing the new zoning requirements for the new Airport Gulf District. Northwest Thirty-Six and Abraham Track. Um so the zoning codes that we have right now for those areas were developed by them in conjunction with the with the council. Uh so they know the area, they have experience in uh in in that zoning district. So that's one of the main reasons that we uh approached them. Um I know Heidi and uh Vice Rota has had uh ample, a lot of experience with uh Calvin Giordano and and other cities. And um Tammy and I feel confident that they are. Uh strong, strong firm that can help us not only with general planning, but. What council is expressing the future about a vision for development and what to do in those areas. As far as marketing and and development, I think they're a perfect fit. Uh but like I said, this is just an interim agreement. Um you guys during the budget workshops can work on. On thinking about how you want to approach this long term. But uh we recommend that you approve this now so that we can continue our our services until the end of the fiscal year.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um so I I am in agreement that this is uh. This is the right to the right folks to go with uh for for day-to-day planning, given that we have uh. We have uh that opening now uh in the staff. Uh but I also, I like, I like that this contract will allow for us to to maybe give them some special projects. I know that implementation of all the recommendations that were given to us by the Economic Development Board, I think that that's something that they could start working on. And what we've discussed in previous workshops and meetings about uh about having them kind of help us look at. The Northwest Thirty-Six Street Business Corridor kind of holistically. Uh this is what they do. They're they're a planning and zoning uh firm, so I think that they uh. And given that they have experience with that area with us and we had consensus about that, we wanted to have uh have some folks help us look at that. Uh I think that uh I'm in favor of this of of this contract and and perhaps even. Having them assist us with some of the things that we've already got consensus that we need to start getting done in that area.
To the chair.
Yes.
Um I also like that there was a flexibility on, you know, uh the termination aspect and also the consultant's responsibilities. Uh they've opened themselves up to to quality on six point one, which is very important for for us um considering costs. Um overall, the the terms, it's it's fair. Nothing harsh and we have open windows. I mean, from what I can see, we we're kind of in control of the of the agreement. Of the interim agreement, which is which is nice. All that to say.
Richard.
Yes, sir.
Um I am generally in favor of this uh of of this uh motion. Um I I believe it's important, number one. It's interim, which gives us a little bit of time. We do need someone doing this work. There's no question about that. Um whether uh it's a longer term or. I'll certainly take a look at it as we as we go along. And maybe uh and maybe that's the way we'll go is we won't need a part-time planner. We would have this uh. Um this on their hands, so I, you know, so I I agree.
Okay. You have a motion. It's uh Council, Vice Mayor, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay. Motion?
It's been said.
All right. Is there a motion to?
The motion.
I. To move this item?
I think Heidi's gonna chime in.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Heidi.
Tammy, were you gonna chime in or do you want me to?
I was just going to just uh make note that the contract would be a um. Uh through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four, so it would be. The remainder of this fiscal year plus one additional. However, those terms can always be um terminated uh for convenience at any time and they they've agreed to that.
And you'll see in uh in uh section eight, eight point one, that the city manager without cause may terminate this agreement upon five.
Five days.
Okay, and I think this gives us um a budget again, um as um. Tammy and William mentioned, we'll decide whether to continue with this firm or or with this process or look elsewhere. I I really feel that a firm with this um uh depth and breadth of experience. Uh it it's not just one planner, it's they are really um. They're qualified to help us on with a lot of things, specifically some of the areas that we've been talking about that we had the workshop with. You know, to move forward, we're gonna need a firm like that to help us get there. So is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
He made the motion. Santin made a motion.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. All right.
A second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we move to Agenda Item, um Agenda Items number twelve, and the first one is twelve, A, Request. By Staff to Discuss the City Manager Interview Process.
Bill? Please. Good evening, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um so um I'm here basically to ask you to consider making a um a date for interviews for the um. Uh for the city manager position and um also um. Um some guidance on how the process, the process that you wish to uh follow. Um the city manager interviews are are totally within your control. You you decide how you want to handle. Um the um executive search, um the woman heading the executive search, Donna Hagen-Bottom, will work with you. On the uh on the way you'd like to proceed, so that's it. Um you can just see there's sixteen uh applicants that applied by the deadline and uh she's processing those. Right now and uh she um she indicates that she's going to send. Um five to eight applicants uh that she recommends to you for your uh input. If you, if three of you decide you want to interview that applicant, uh we will schedule them for an interview. And uh so that process will be done by. Right around June sixth. So May thirtieth, you should be receiving those by email. And uh on uh June sixth, that's when you'll have to make your decisions. That's a deadline for your decisions on who you want to interview. Um according to Ms. Higginbottom, um she can't, uh she needs until June twentieth. Um to conduct her all of the background checks and um so. Uh interviews can be held on June twentieth, which is a Tuesday, or any date thereafter. And uh that's it.
Thank you, Bill. When you said um she's going to um any of us that three of us are interested in interviewing, that's individually. That we advise her that we're interested in that candidate, then she'll.
Right.
Select them for to be interviewed as part of for all the council. Is that correct?
That's that's correct. That's correct.
Um I have a suggestion. Well, I have two suggestions on how to do this. I. And it's open for discussion, of course. Um I think. Once we respond to Donna, each of us will get individual information about um who's applying, who she thinks would be a a possible uh candidate. For us to consider. That we schedule them to come in for an afternoon. That afternoon, we would all be available for interviews. The interviews would be held um separately. Individually, but we can interview with each one or as many as we want individually. I don't know, fifteen to thirty minutes that we have with each one. And then that evening that we either combine it with a city council meeting. Or with a special meeting for that day so that evening, we actually interview them as a group. Um I feel very strongly, I I know I will not be able to make a decision on that day. You know, the same day that I interview these candidates and hear from them, I won't be prepared to make a decision. I need time to digest it, to think about it. We need time to, um you know, if there's someone that we happen to know about, that we think somebody else knows about, to reach out to them and get it, you know, um get a feel for it, so. Since we're running into July, when we don't meet, there's two possibilities. And again, this is, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm open for suggestions. Um that say for our June, you said, Bill, she's not gonna be ready for the June twelfth meeting.
Right, I I tried, I tried to to schedule that and she said, I'm sorry, I just can't make that. The earliest that I can do it is on June twentieth.
June twenty, okay, so there's two possibilities here. One is that we hold a special day um before our June twenty-fourth meeting. Um where we um schedule that day to meet with the candidates in the afternoon. And then have a a special meeting at seven PM or whatever, where we interview them together. And then at our June twenty-fourth meeting.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, excuse me, June twenty-sixth meeting is when we select. So that means that we would have to have this meeting. Before. I would like to have it a week before so that we can, and then the o- other possibility would be the reverse. That our June twenty-fourth meeting, we meet with them that af- excuse me, I don't know why I keep saying twenty-fourth, twenty-sixth. Thank you for reading my mind. Um at the June twenty-sixth meeting, we spend that afternoon, it's available for those of us that want to meet with them individually. And then at that meeting, which is our regularly scheduled meeting of June twenty-sixth, is when we interview them together. And then we would have to select another date for a special meeting. Now, it's possible. We already have the Millage meeting set for July twentieth. So we can add an agenda item there or we can, you know, schedule a special meeting for that.
Interview have to be done during a council meeting?
No, that's why I'm saying that we could actually choose a special meeting before.
We happen to have a special meeting already on the calendar.
But she's not gonna be available.
June, no, June fourteenth.
But she's not, well, she won't be available. She's not, well, she won't be available.
She won't be available.
She's not gonna be available.
Right. Yes, because we were, I think that what Bill was trying is to get her for the June twelfth.
I think the issue is that once you select the, the five or six people that you want to interview, she has to do background checks.
Right, right.
And that takes, what, about two weeks?
She says at least two weeks, right. So the twentieth is when she said she would. That's from June sixth to June twentieth, that's, that's two weeks, so.
Okay, so that takes away the ability to meet and then I can't from, I, and I don't, I'm guessing the rest of the council feels strongly also that you would like to have some time to digest this. So as I see it, probably the best thing would be for the June twenty-fourth meeting, twenty-sixth. I am sorry, I don't know why I keep saying that. I know what it is. I'm coming back into town that day. Okay, the June twenty-sixth meeting, that, that meeting, we schedule the interviews in the evening. Bill will take care of that, you know, individual interviews with the candidates. And then that night is when we interview them together.
I mean, is it in the afternoon? You're saying that you, you, we would, we would schedule interviews, round robin interviews?
Round, something like that in the afternoon, right.
And then at seven o'clock, they would come here and then they
And by then we've all had a chance to get, you know, be, be familiar with them and everything and anything that we want to ask as a council. We would, and then we would schedule another meeting. Possibly, I guess, the, the best choice, because we're off in July and I know it's gonna be hard to get all our schedules together. But, you know, we can work on, on an earlier date, would be the Ju- July twentieth millage meeting that we also add as an agenda item, that we select the, the city manager.
I know there was a conflict with the June twenty-sixth day. I think Councilman Fahad, are you gonna?
Yeah, I'm out of town.
Will you be able to attend by, by virtually?
I do not think so.
Okay.
No. Yeah, I mean, that's why Erica had asked me, the last meeting, I said that that date I was gonna be on.
Would you be back? I know I
It's gonna be back from what I, I, I know. You'll be back on the twenty-eighth, leaving the twenty-ninth available, which is a Thursday.
I can do that.
It's a June twenty-ninth.
Okay.
So that's an option to
June? Let me just make sure.
Twenty-ninth, yeah.
June.
June, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's a Thursday?
Correct.
And what we would have then is actually a special meeting that night, right? We would hold the interviews that afternoon, that Thursday, June twenty-ninth. And again, the interviews are at the, would be for whatever council members choose to, I'm guessing most of us will, but, you know, to interview the candidates separately.
Yeah, it's a good idea, Mayor, because she needs to the June twentieth to finish the background checks. So by the time that we meet, if there's anything that comes up in their background check, they'd be eliminated from a potential waste of an interview. So I think that's a good idea.
Yes, sir.
I, I've gotten a little confused with, I keep trying to write these dates down.
I know.
Bill, you said she needs two weeks after June twentieth, right?
No, after June sixth.
For background checks.
After June sixth, right. So those people will be fully vetted before you interview them. That's, that's her, that's her, her plan. That's how she traditionally does her. So it's such, such a public process, you don't want to be in a situation, you know.
So now, now, now I'm really confused. So she's gonna interview sixteen candidates and she's gonna make a recommendation of five to eight for us to interview. Right? And, and she's gonna have that done by when?
By, uh, May thirtieth. May thirty.
Oh, I thought you said June twentieth.
May, no, May thirtieth is when you're gonna get your
May thirtieth, we get
Your, all of the application, yes.
We get the shortlist May thirtieth, we have one week, we have until the very next Tuesday, which is June sixth, to tell them who we want to interview. Any candidate who has three or more people that want to be interviewed, then they will be scheduled to come in.
But she will have
But she will need until six twenty to have the, the background check.
So really what we're talking about is instead, is instead of doing this on June twenty-sixth meeting is having a special meeting on June twenty-ninth, which is a Thursday, just for that. And that would mean that that afternoon, that Thursday, would be when we have the opportunity to meet individually with them. And then at the, we'd schedule the meeting for whatever time that evening.
Mayor, Heidi had a good idea. Is, is it possible, I don't know if the charter allows it or to move the June twenty-sixth regular meeting to June twenty-ninth?
You can move it.
We can do that?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That, that would be even easier. Is everyone's in agreement with that?
Give us a little more, yes.
So we, we won't meet that Monday, we'll just hold the meeting. Okay, that would be fine.
So third day, the twenty-ninth is generally this, a good date?
Okay.
Okay, I think I got it.
Okay, so that'll be our, our second meeting in June and it'll also be that afternoon where, Bill, you work with Donna to arrange the private interviews and individual interviews. And then that night we'll do a, that way we can all hear them answer our questions, whatever questions we have. And then what we still need to pick is then when we'll get together to select. And hopefully we can make a selection from the candidates. So is everyone in agreement if we're talking June twenty-ninth, practically talking three weeks later for the millage? Unless we move the mill, it's gonna be hard though for everyone. If we've already agreed to July twentieth as a date, it's hard to get our schedule.
When do we set the millage cap?
The twentieth.
The twenty.
That's it. So we can add that as an agenda item.
Scheduling the millage earlier is that Chris
Right, he needs work. Okay. So, and we've already set that date as the twentieth for the millage cap, right? Everyone's scheduled meets with that. So, okay, well, we're talking about a week, one way or the other. I don't know that, you know, week or two, one way or the other, it's not, yes, sir.
Richard. So the meeting that you're talking about right now, the meeting where we're going to select?
There won't be a meeting to, so what, my understanding, Bill, you correct me, is Donna or executive search team will be sending each of us individually information about candidates.
Yes.
From there, we will let her know, and there may be between eight to fifteen. From there, we will, individually, we will respond.
She said five to eight. You know, we only have, yeah, we only have sixteen.
Five.
Five to
So we'll let her know individually which ones we're interested in. And after that, she'll select any, any of them that have three, that three of us are interested in. And then that will be for the June twenty-ninth meeting.
Right, yes.
Which that afternoon, we'll meet with them individually, like a round robin, whatever
Yes.
Decide, Bill. And then that night we'll do a, but again, we won't be selecting the manager then, we'll wait till the twentieth. And that'll give us all time.
So, so tentatively, I would say, on that date, I'd put aside between maybe one PM and five PM, although it'll probably be even smaller than that. But that, you know, depending on how many applicants there are, and that, that would be where you're, do your one-on-one interviews. You'd break for, for dinner and then you'd be back here at, at seven o'clock to do the, where the person would, would come and speak directly before you and you could ask any question publicly at that time.
And then that way, any candidates that are coming in from out of town, they're here for the day. They, you know, we're not lengthening that. Also, I think if possible, if we can set up something so that if in the morning, some of them would like to take a tour of the city, if they're from out of town, you know, that we arrange something for, I don't know if that would be the police department, public parks employee or somebody to individually take them or if it's by bus, whatever, just to make that available to them. A, a tour of the city.
I think we, I think we could probably arrange for something like that. Yep.
It's gonna be a pretty lengthy meeting on the twenty-ninth. If we have three or four candidates and we, they, you know, they say a few words and then we interview them, it's gonna be a lot. I mean, well, that'll be the, you know, it just depends on what we put on the agenda, but
No, I think they're giving a, a timeframe as well, about ten minutes to
Right. Yeah, the idea is at least, again, this is, this is Mercer Group Florida, Donna Higginbottom. Her recommendation is that the bulk of your, of your decision-making, your interviewing will occur on these one-on-one interviews. That's a long day for them, you know, that, even if we're talking, whatever, thirty minutes, that's two and a half hours. So, and then the, the, the meeting that you'd have here would be a chance for maybe the public to, to really to hear the person, just give a brief presentation, a brief, just to address the board. And that you would have an opportunity to make a, a, you know, a, a public question. You, you might want to limit that. Right.
Well, that, each of them should make a, no more than ten or fifteen minute presentation, because that's something that they're gonna be doing to us anyway. So I think it's important that we, you know, see how they present themselves in public at our meetings and stuff and make a presentation.
Donna recommends, you know, she loves five to eight, but she says five to, five to eight minutes, you know, a presentation, it could be ten, right? But then followed, followed by another five or ten minutes of, you know, questions from, from the council.
Okay. Are we in agreement with that then? So the twenty-ninth?
Yeah, I think that's a good plan.
Meeting instead of the twenty-sixth, okay.
Yep.
And Erica, put that on our calendars, please, because tip it on our calendars, yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. All right, so, uh, the next agenda item, twelve B, is a request by staff to determine the topic of the discussion we decided on. Or we set a possible date for a workshop on June fourteenth at six PM. And at our last workshop, we said that we would decide whether we want the topic to be working on the strategic plan or discussing the strategic plan, how to move forward, or whether it should be trying to discuss the business and economic development recommendations.
Right, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think I had pushed for the, for the workshop to be about the recommendations by the Economic Advisory Board. But last meeting, Heidi mentioned that most of those things are code-related and would fall under just, you know, us seeking help to implement those things. So I don't think there's a need for a workshop for that. I think it's been discussed. And that there's consensus to move forward on that. So I spent some time looking over the strategic plan that was made in two thousand and twelve and that was updated several times by the council. And I think that we should take the opportunity on the fourteenth to really take a deep dive, each of us individually, ahead of that workshop and then come in and, and kind of give our thoughts and update it and, and see what, what changed. I think there's a, a good, it's a really good place to start. This previous strategic plan, and I think that we should update it and, and kind of make it current based on the things that we feel at this time are most important to the city.
Anyone else?
To, to the chairs. I don't mind getting together for a workshop for the strategic plan, but I kind of, I, my eyes were just opened with this clear point presentation, because it provides, unless we could come up with that manually or a system, but it kind of, it goes hand in hand, not only with the strategy, it goes into implementation, execution and results. So it gives you an opportunity to measure what's actually going on and where we have to enforce. And that, that's a direct result for, even with the city manager, that's a huge tool for her or him as well to coordinate and go over these items with the department heads. It would help with productivity on all the other, like, all the areas that we have, whether it be the recreation center, whether it be the Miami Springs Country Club. It provides, you know, I don't know how, I think definitely with a strategic plan, we need something that we can see where, where we're lacking. I don't think we actually have like a system where we can say our strengths, our weaknesses, and then once we come up with our strengths, how it's, I mean, I don't know, that's kind of like, I think I took a look at the strategic plan, but I just think that we're, we need to use some sort of
I just want to say, Councilwoman, the, the presentation that they made, it was a lot of record-keeping, I guess. Somebody has to enter that data. Somebody, we have to establish what that data is, but somebody has to be entering that. And some of those cities, it's, it's great to be able to send that out to someone, but in reality, I think we probably want to simplify our strategic plan.
Right.
Councilman Fahad?
Yeah, I would, you know, I mean, I appreciate that they did their presentation. Not to put too fine a point on it, but it seemed kind of like a Rube Goldberg to machine. I've got experience with, with data display systems like that. It's a lot of work, like, you know, I mean, so all, all of the key things that we're talking about, right? Having goals, discussing what the measurable objectives are, having, you know, coming up with strategy initiatives to implement, you know, the goals and measure them and, and setting for yourself key performance indicators. That's all built into this plan that was done for us before. And I think it's just a matter of paying attention to it. But I feel like, you know, I mean, they talk about that, like, oh, your systems can integrate with our systems. I'm telling you that when it, when it comes to government agencies and data systems and uploading, that, that I can see that being something that it, it is very time-consuming to upload all those things, to have it. But I don't feel like it has to, I don't feel like it has to be so centralized in, in terms of how we monitor that. I think that those are things that we have to monitor ourselves. And again, I think that we've got a strategic plan. I think that it needs to be updated. I think that we should take a workshop to really update it and, and but I, that particular vendor and what they're selling, I, I think is just kind of window dressing on, on what is the, what we need to probably be focusing on, which is, you know, the actual things that are in the plan.
To the chair. I agree with you. I, I don't, I didn't mean to, because I want to go with this company. I just like the idea and how we can maybe make that happen with our own manpower.
Yeah.
And so that we can, if we're gonna set a strategic plan, a way that, or a system that they can put together, whether it be an Excel spreadsheet, whatever it is, a PowerPoint or, or graphs, but something that, a tool that can really help compare and contrast. Because we could put a strategic plan all day long and it looks pretty and printed. But when I go back, really like, how do I go back and say, okay, because a lot of those things are still happening. Have you noticed the strategic plan? So I just want to make sure that we make
Let's do this, because I think these are things that we need to discuss at the workshop. But, you know, what I, I would like to suggest is I, and I've seen a lot of strategic plans, you know, and a lot of government agencies. The simpler they are, the better. They're, you know, some of the things that they're showing, those are metrics, those are measurements that our city manager should be doing, you know, would be doing as, you know, this is the work that they're supposed to be doing. How are they doing? And those are the kind of reports we get from our city manager and assistant city manager and our police and all. You know, what is happening with this? So I don't see that, you know, that we need that kind of strategic plan at all. I think for our city, what we do need is something very clear as to what our goals are short-term. You know, in the next three to five years, next ten years, what our vision would be, keeping in mind that, you know, things change dramatically, like remote workforce, who would have believed that except the pandemic hit? So, you know, there may be things that get side-riled, but I think these are all things that we can discuss at the workshop. What we need to decide is, will the workshop be the strategic management? I know Councilman, Vice Mayor Santin and I felt the strategic plan should come before anything else, because if we're not planning that, why are, you know, if we're going to be requiring the business and economic, I mean, asking to go forward with the business and economic development recommendations, which are very good recommendations, they should be, you know, that's part of the plan, the strategic plan is to go forward with those. So let's
I agree.
If everyone agrees. Yes, sir.
Two things. I don't disagree with the general gist of things that are being said. I, I just want to make sure that we are clear on what our objective is for that workshop, number one. And number two, at the last meeting, was it at the workshop? I think it was at the workshop. One of the things that I raised was how, how important it might be, would be and possibly could be if the new city manager at some point is part of the, this discussion of finalizing a strategic plan. I think having that person give their input as well from their experience. So if the objective on the, remind me again, is the fourteenth?
The workshop?
Yes. I got all this written down. I don't have it straight in my head, is to, as, as you all have recommended, that we look, I mean, I was looking at it, but I, I mean, I think we were doing something else today. But anyway, the point is, is to begin that discussion. The strategic plan by agreeing, if possible, on long-range and short-term goals. I think that would help us, you know, borrowing from
Better alarm? We need to
Borrowing from, you know, you, I, 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 I agree that there was a strategic plan that was done in two thousand and twelve and some things, you know, I, I, let's not reinvent the wheel. We've got a framework, let's look at, and that should be the thrust. And that should be the thrust of the workshop is to say, okay, given this, let's have a discussion around what do we see the city doing in five years? I think if that's the the framework for the workshop, I'm in agreement.
Okay.
Uh, that that there will be another opportunity to fine tune that and it'll be later in the summer, right? And by that time, we hope to have the new city manager in place, that the city manager could be here for that conversation.
And I think the city, the new city manager, one of the things he's going to ask you is where does the city want to go?
Yes.
So this will help in getting that started. Obviously, you know, it's not, we're not going to ask him, where do you want us to go? He's going to be, uh, he or she will be, you know, um, wanting to know where we want to go. So so let's do this. Let's go ahead and, um, let Erica know that the workshop will be to just, um, to work on the strategic plan. And we can work out the the, you know, details of how complex or how simple it is and all that at the workshop.
Yeah, and Mayor, I would, I would ask like, this is, there is economy of words in in a plan like this. It it doesn't seem like it's a lot, uh, but that's because a lot of thought goes is behind the words. I would just, uh, implore all of us to come to that meeting on June fourteenth, like, ready. Like, we need to go through this, have all our recommendations, and if we have any questions, we should ask staff our questions before we get to the meeting. So this meeting can just be like, you know, we we've already digested it and we can really do some high level thinking. My second.
Mayor, if I may.
Thank you.
Just, um, sort of comment and a reminder, and and I think actually, Councilman Fahed, you mentioned it earlier. The the agreement you just authorized the manager to negotiate later for these planning services does give uh, the council and and the administration the ability to have Calvin Giordano work on a specific project. I think it might be helpful to have Calvin Giordano to assist in sort of keeping the goal straight, uh, preliminarily in this sort of visioning process.
So Roger, you're saying for ask them to attend the workshop?
I think it could be useful.
I think.
But that that's going to cost us, right? If we have them be part of the process, I really, I really think we can.
Yes, it will.
Yeah, I I don't, I would like for us to do a workshop where we really, really look at this document really, really well. And and I I would love for all of us to come together and and talk about like, hey, what do you think? But and I think we could get a lot done, and I think we will surprise ourselves that we don't need somebody to come in and guide us. I think that this is a great framework. I looked at it and and I think that we can get a lot of, we can have a lot of, we can come to a lot of agreement about this that will serve as a north star for us to get moving. The the one thing that I, once you start paying people to come in and consult, right? I mean, unless it's for something like zoning and change, I mean, like, you can't, we can't do it ourselves. This is something I feel like we could do ourselves. A consultant already drove this process back then. Uh, once you start inviting people in and paying them to consult, then the the process kind of gets, you know, expanded a little bit. And and I feel like we're a legislative body, it's hard to get things done. It's hard to get consensus and sometimes even have consensus and then vocal minorities speak up and kind of undermine it or, uh, kibosh it. Uh, I, we have consensus on a lot of things. I want to keep moving. Where, uh, as we start scheduling everything that's happening in the city manager, you see like July is gone. Next thing we know, it's August. We, I want to get a lot of things done. I feel it'll be helpful for us to go through this, but I don't want to extend it very much beyond this workshop. I think if we come ready, we can get a lot done and it'll serve us well.
Okay, those are good points, Councilman, and, um, unless anyone has any strong feelings, then let's go ahead and just tell Erica. Erica, for what day is that June?
Through the chair. If he can just be a part of the workshop and just listen to us and what we have.
Well, I think.
Heard of discharge the billable hours.
No, no, it would be on his own will.
I want that.
Let's.
They can sign two contracts with them.
Okay, I I guess. All right, I guess we can. At the meeting, let's as a courtesy, let them know that the meeting is that day, okay, as a courtesy, let's do that. And, um, but not, you know, um, require asks that they attend. And, um, and I think you made very good points. It's true. I I agree. The simpler the strategic plan with things that this is our goals and their measure, and then to Councilwoman Bravo's point of, you know, how do we measure it? We put that in the strategic plan annually at one of the meetings. We go over it and we look and see where we are, and if some things were on there that aren't any longer in our plan for whatever reason, you know, we address that and we, um, either say that this will be, you know, deferred to the future or that it's no longer whatever. But on an annual basis that, um, it's something that whatever city council is here, they're aware of it. And I think that's where, um, this kind of, um, you know, there wasn't that process put in place for the, yes, sir.
Can I suggest that we have a very short structured agenda to guide us, okay? So that we're not throwing things in, you know, let's, you know, uh, I I don't have a suggestion right now, but rather, but rather that we.
This is it. We'll look at and seeing how instead of reinventing the wheel, we have one in in front of us and we'll see what we feel is, um.
And if we don't.
Quite that and what we'd like.
If we don't get through all the strategic areas, Mayor, if we only get through, uh, three of the five, right? Then we'll have another workshop. We'll finish up financial management communication. I think that the the shame about this is that we stopped updating it. I feel like, as you were saying, if this is something that we we work on now and every year we keep going back to it, the 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 updating will take, will be less laborious. And I think that it it actually can be subsumed with our yearly goals meetings because I, you know, I feel like we'll just keep touching base here and keeping this at the forefront of.
Would be a good time to go over it. In fact, when we do the yearly goals and 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 I want to reiterate something that we talked about at the last meeting. Um, and it was Councilman Fahet's, um, term, but I really like it, the the North Star that, you know, the city, whether the strategic plan has been there or not, the city council for at least the years that I know, which have been numerous, numerous years, has always been following us, uh, strategic plan, you know, and it's always been to improve the quality of life of our residents, improve recreational opportunities, improve, um, all of the the facilities that we have. Um, make sure that the the, um, departments are responsive to the residents and improving the services that we provide to the residents, making sure that there's an open door policy so that we know about issues or our city manager know about issues and it can be quickly and promptly, and it is. So the majority of the things are quickly and promptly, um, taken care of. Um, just making our city constantly improving upon it, making it the best it is, preserving our golf course, our our green spaces. And, um, what we've tackled, which isn't new to the recent city council, it's something that's been done along, improving our commercial and business districts and making them, um, thrive, making them well, uh, making them do extremely well. So those are always things that I think every council has had. It's not like we're making these, you know, abrupt ninety degree turns, um, and that, but this will uh, uh, document it, I guess, memorialize it, um, facilitate it for future councils and for us and for our staff to know.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, no, so I I, uh, I took a quick look at it because I only did a quick reading of it. Uh, again, I wasn't sure that that's what we're going to be talking about. I like the structure. We can follow that structure.
Yeah.
You know, that's the agenda. Look at the vision, look at the, you know, the mission and and go on from there. And so I think we all should take a look at it very carefully, write notes on areas, things that we want to fine tune because in the history of the city, this replaces that twenty twelve strategic plan.
Yep.
And so future councils can then refer to this document as the North Star of the city. And maybe later on, some other councils may want to tweak it or 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 have the same kind of discussion. Five, 10 years from now, that that would be appropriate. So I like the structure. Let's follow it. I agree with the, with all of you and especially, uh, Councilman Fahed. Mayor, I would just. Focus on that. I would just reiterate, uh, that as we get prepared for this, uh, because I think a lot of times if we we come up, you know, obviously questions come up, right? But if you have obvious questions, because there there's going to be so much to talk about, if if we, if you have questions, ask staff. Because one, it gives staff the time to look for answers because I think we've learned our lesson not to spring questions, uh, you know, on staff uh, and then get answers that that are maybe incomplete. Uh, but I think it it it'll help because that that will help us move more efficiently. If as you're going through it carefully, if you have any questions about any projects or what it was, like, like encourage everybody to reach out to staff and get your answers before you come in so that we can have a a very efficient discussion.
Thank you, and that's something we should do with all council meetings, um, you know, with the agenda for any council meetings. Um, when you prepare for the meeting, you know, whenever you see the agenda, you know, it usually comes out Wednesday or Thursday before the Monday meeting is, um, you know, reach out to the city manager, um, or assistant city manager and discuss issues that we have concern, that you have concerns about to kind of clarify it so that the questions that we ask are helpful to all of us. But it's not questions that are kind of like, um, you know, we just didn't bother to to try to find that out be ahead of time.
Right.
Um, and that I'm not by any means saying, um, not to ask questions at the meetings, but the question should be something that, you know, is helpful.
Of course.
Information for all of us. Okay, um.
See.
So let's move on to, um, the next agenda item, which is, um, a discussion. Um, I wanted to request a discussion when I was meeting with our I T director, um, recently. George, who anyone who knows him is just a terrific, terrific, um, very capable, his expertise and, um, his, um, his work for the city. I asked him about our website, about the possibility, how difficult it would be, and I was surprised at his answer. He said, this is one of those things that would not be difficult at all, um, to have a dropdown menu. You know, we've been talking about promoting the businesses, the shops, the the retail stores, the professional services and all in Miami Springs and the Business and Economic Development Task Force, that was one of their, um, uh, one of the things that they looked at of how do we help with, you know, promote the businesses that are here so that they thrive. Um, I asked George about putting a dropdown menu on our website so that under, if there was a a section that just said, um, uh, restaurants or dining and you, uh, and shops that you go there and there's a dropdown menu with the names of each one and their website. So all it's doing is saying, and I'll just use, um, you know, um, cozy corner because it's right here, be cozy corner and the website. And then under restaurants and then the user could click on that and it actually takes them to their website. So they get information about the restaurant. But we could do that for the retail stores that we have, for the restaurants, for the services that we have. You know, if somebody's looking for a dentist or, you know, uh, I don't know, a veterinarian or something in the city that these and it would be up to the owners of these businesses, we would establish some way that they fill out a form or, you know, email the city with that information that they want to be on that list. And then, um, uh, it would be up to the owners to provide their current website to update the it. And, um, but we're assisting, when you come to the city, you have a way on our website to quickly see what establishments are available um, throughout the city.
Is it possible, Mayor? Um, just because, although it it can hurt to have a a dropdown box, but I don't, you know, I don't know.
Well, and I'm saying dropdown because that was how I visualized it. It may not be like that.
Right, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying no to that. What I'm saying is that it, in terms of return on investment, I don't know how many people go to the city website. I mean, if you happen to be on the city website, it'd be valuable to see it, but but I think, and I don't know, that's something that we could do with Shannon. I think, uh, uh, through our social media, a lot of people follow our social media. And if we did just like a little spot where it was just like a spotlight on a local business, I don't see why they would, why the businesses wouldn't be open to that. You know, and and you could go in like, hey, here's Jeff in Barrio Ville and just kind of show a couple of things. That goes out and that's advertising for them and a lot of people follow us. I think that would really help the local business.
Well, and I think that that would be something that we could definitely have in our, on our. On our weekly emails is to ask to perhaps, you know, um, every week is, you know, this business. Um, the the dropdown thing is when you look at a city, and I know for me, for myself, when we're planning to meet some friends middle of the way, you know, say, and I'll just use whatever city, um, Coral Gables, what's over there? Um, I don't know, let me quickly look what kind of restaurants and you know of some, but you'd like to know what's there. So so I don't think one thing.
Yeah, they're not mutually.
But I think that the purpose here is to start promoting our businesses. We have wonderful businesses here, restaurants, shops, um, services and, um, you know, why aren't, why aren't we doing what we can to help promote them to make sure that someone can easily reach them? So what I was surprised about that was that it's my understanding, Tammy, and I know you spoke to George later, that it's not that complicated to do on our website.
So the dropdown itself is not that complicated. Where it's going to get complicated is who's going to be inputting all of this? Shannon is right there at, you know, I mean, she's doing all of the social media. She's doing the newsletter. She's doing a lot of things. It, I mean, this takes up time to do all of these flyers, all of it's.
I'm not sure what flyers. You're saying to request the the businesses to?
I'm just saying in general, Shannon's job in general takes up a lot of time. And now if you're going to add this as as part of it.
This would be just.
Suggest, what I'd like to suggest is the business tax licenses are up for renewal right now or will be in the next couple of months. Could we not add a little?
I think that's an excellent to.
Added to the city's website. If so, you know, we can do it that way, but it's still going to be very time.
But is that a paper process?
You send, you get a letter.
Uh, you get a letter, yes.
In the mail.
Right. I just, so Shannon, Shannon already has a lot to do, I'm sure. So adding to her like, hey, do once a month, do a little spotlight, do a little spot or take a couple of pictures at a little local restaurant. It's extra work. Having her manually input restaurant or business information into the website is probably not the best use of her time. But there are jot forms, there are there are Google forms that you could do where, you know, it's electronic, but they basically give you the information. So I think it would be a little easier to input it if we were going to put it. If I had to pick between one or the other, whether the website or social media, I think that the businesses would get more out of us to promoting them on social media.
And where do we stop with this? Are we doing home businesses? Are we doing, I mean, where do we stop with this?
Well, I think with social media that, and these are not mutually exclusive, they're all. I've, I would like to see on our website a list of what we have, and we've got twenty something restaurants. It's not that many. We've got twenty something shops, probably, I don't know, thirty or something shops. I mean, there's probably a lot of businesses, but a lot of the businesses are, you know, home business that you have. It's not directing you to, uh, staff. So I think that that's, we can figure out a way to, and I think the business in September, the business occupational licenses do go out. I know they're they're mailed out and we can provide that. We can also advise, um, on our weekly newsletter that we're starting this, if you're interested in it, um, request the form. All we're talking about is the name of the company and the website, no other information. That's it, a link to their website. So we're not entering their address, their phone number or anything, their website, a link to their website. And that's what I spoke with George that he said would be easy because it goes to their website.
That's fine.
It's not.
Everybody's.
A detail. But I don't think that these other ideas are something that we shouldn't pursue also, you know, as much as we can. And perhaps it is too much for Shannon to ask her to go to a certain restaurant, but we can nonetheless highlight one of the restaurants. Um, you know, somehow on the weekly newsletter, if they're interested, just, um, you know, she'll have to to see what's what's available. I know I, you know, send her stuff that, you know, that I think would benefit the community and I just say, post it. So, um, we can figure out something with that with the social media. Both the ones, one is our city website, where do you find out information about, you know, um, the retail stores and the and the restaurants here and, um, some of the professional services and we'll have to limit with professional services because obviously professional services could be a long thing.
So. Sorry, if I could just make one quick point, but people pay local websites, right? They create content and pay to have that person post it. I think if we were willing to post it on our, well, on our social media, I think that businesses would would.
That could be a revenue source, yeah.
I think they would be willing to do a lot of the legwork and, yeah, no.
Government website.
Mayor, members of the council, um, I would caution against the profiting off of promoting local businesses. Um, generally, everything that the government does, unless it's in per, it's in its, uh, proprietary function has to be, uh, serving a public purpose.
But can I clarify? I wasn't saying to have them pay. What I was saying is that rather than have Shannon go out to the restaurant and create content about a local business, that people are willing to create content and pay to have you put it on a website that's dedicated to Miami Springs, why would they not be willing to provide some content to give to Shannon for her to put for free on there? Like, I don't, I don't, I don't think she has to get a camera crew and go out to a business. I think that if we're willing to post it, I think they would be willing to.
Let's, let's think about that a little further with the social media because I can see a lot of, you know, well, wait, you're posting this one, but why aren't you posting mine? When I'm talking about. When, when I'm talking about on our website is just, they're all there.
Right.
You know, so it's not something like, wait a minute, you've posted that restaurant, but you didn't, oh, we didn't post yours because we didn't have all the information. So I think that's another. Uh, another discussion item, let's say that, you know, of how to use social media to, um, right now we're talking about with the website. Yes, sir.
I, I, I agree with the idea of promotion and, 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 uh, uh, you know, and, and getting basic information out about all businesses. But then you have to keep it, you know, updated because some businesses come and go. Um, I would just remind us, and this is where it might fit this conversation. Is that the Economic Business Development Task Force made a specific recommendation of the city having someone. Who'll be working marketing and, and so forth, uh, businesses and trying to bring business to the city. So I would just say. Short term, if it fits within the real, the realm of what Shannon could do, uh, you know, that, and you, you know that better than me. Um, but that that would be part of the discussion we have when we, when we have that discussion around economic and business.
Budget, we'd have to decide if we're going to budget a position for that. Right. I, I think that this is something based on my. Um, conversation with our IT that because, and there's some things on our website that are very complicated that aren't. But this is just if a business wants to be posted, we do it through the. Um, yearly whatever of asking for your occupational license, which you're renewing your occupational license or you're getting a new occupational license that goes out. And then if they want to, they just provide their name and their website. We enter that in, it takes them to their website. If, um, if the following year, if they don't renew it, they're no longer in business, then.
We'll have to figure out the logistics of how to remove them. And if there's, if there's a query or some sort. That we can work with the website because if you get a couple hundred businesses on there, wherever this is going to lead to. You know, it would be very difficult if a business closed tomorrow to, to stay on top of that.
Okay, um. So let's do this. Do we want to direct? You to work with George and look into it more, or do we just want you to try to get it done? I mean, I don't think we need to know the real details of it if we're simplifying it to just seeing that, you know, businesses. And, and I'm talking, let's start with just the shops, the retail stores and the restaurants. You know, something that is, and I'm thinking of the retail stores and restaurants.
Tax places.
Through the chair. Yes.
Um, so.
Oh, sorry. No, no, no.
Um, so just looking at an example, it could get complicated. So I think what we want to do is separate the government entity from. Kind of like a website that we're trying to look at, right? Um, so I'm seeing City of Fort Lauderdale. So they do have a visitors tab. So you would go to Miami Springs.gov, click on the visitors tab. When you click on that visitors tab, it takes them to a whole new website. And who created that was, uh, the Greater Fort Lauderdale Convention and Visitors Bureau. So I think they may have something together. Um, so maybe we want to look into that. I don't know if we have a bureau, we can look at.
Do, and we're paying bed taxes to them and they're the ones that are providing the, the map. Do that for us.
Because that would be.
Or the Chamber of Commerce.
Does, may not have the resources to do that, but the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau, we're paying bed taxes to them to promote cities. They're the ones that create the, the.
The map.
One of my questions for them was what, if they're doing, using our bed tax, how are they investing back into our city? So I think that's another question that we need to ask county commissioners.
They, um, created the city hall and everything to, um, and they can show you how they're. Councilwoman, do you want to reach out?
Yes, I am. I actually have a late June meeting of a ton of items.
His name is Whitaker, the latest director, yes, that, that, um, came after Bill Talbot, Talbot.
So you'll keep, uh, posted. Totally separate. It releases some liability and bias.
And then we'll take up social media some other time.
Right. Social media, I think is, um. Um, it's another, because once West, the website and the other ones, the social media, I, I think it's a great idea of somehow. We figure out how to on our weekly newsletter that we highlight a certain business that's in Miami Springs.
I think weekly puts a lot of pressure on us. I think.
But I don't think it's Shannon going out to take pictures. It's them sending her the information.
Right.
Or the month, like we do yard of the month. How's that? Sure.
Monthly you spotlight on a.
All right. Do you want to look into that and come up with some, so you know?
No good deed goes unpunished. There we go. Yep. All right.
Of, you know, just to narrow it down as to what's a possibility and, um.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'll tell you what, I'll have a conversation with Shannon and see what she thinks in terms of, of that and then I'll report to you.
Okay. Sounds wonderful. Thank you. And all this is just to help our businesses. I mean, they shouldn't be. Shouldn't be like a needle in a haystack to try to find out, you know, three restaurants in Miami Springs. What else is there? You know, and it's difficult to find out. So. Um, all right, let's go to. D, um, I'm going to defer that one for a future meeting. Uh, twelve D and then twelve E, we already did, moved it to the, so now we go to twelve F.
I thought we were going to be discussing this, but, uh, Seth saw a point. I had no issues with that, but there is something that's come up and I had. Spoken to Julie about it and I think I spoke to William about it as well. So. Because it came up, one of the members.
Is this particularly with this person or?
And that is that, uh, um. So if we appoint someone, Roger and company can, 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 um, clarify, I think I understand. Anyone we appoint as a non-voting member is still subject to the sunshine law. Right?
Correct.
Correct, right? Okay. And I think that, um. We should, uh, clearly, or I should, I don't understand, but I, I, I'd like the idea of appointing at large members. Uh, but in talking with, uh, with Julie, ran into the other day. Um, and, and the person that called me about this because concerns about sunshine law, I think there are two things. One is appointing qualified members like Seth, you know, to bring some historical perspective to the commission. But the other is really, um, and that's what I got from Julie when she presented to us a couple of meetings back, is really. Asking people to volunteer to be. You know, Beaver, you know, be workers and not have an official capacity, but just help with tasks. That need to be done. In other words.
Be available.
Right. And that, that doesn't, uh, uh, right? They don't, they're not subject to sunshine law and they're a volunteer on a committee.
Uh, certain committees, they, they, they will not be subject to sunshine law.
Like, okay, so there's a committee that's organizing.
Just a fact finding.
A fact or, 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 you know, we want to do a. Whatever on, on the park and, and one of the things and we want people, that's what I want to get clear in my mind because. If we want to add more people to the Centennial Commission and they're subject to the sunshine law, right? Which means then they can't be having, you know, individual meetings and conversations which may, may make it cumbersome for them to accomplish some of the other work. And I'm thinking if there are people that are volunteers in a different capacity, they're not official members, uh, of, of the commission. They're there to help in whatever capacity they may. I mean, even the, the, when they did the survey, uh, the Centennial Commission. I think about twelve people wound up putting their name in and saying, hey, I'd like to work, I like to volunteer. So I'd like to make sure that we have some clarity on that because I don't want to turn people away from wanting to participate from an event that's going to be big. And it's going to require, you know, dozens of people to work and put together all of the components. Once the commission and the city approves, uh, uh, you know, a plan. Okay, here are the things we're going to do. We're going to need a lot of people to help put those together. So I just want to ask, make sure that we're not hampering the commission from being able to recruit people who want to volunteer. To not necessarily as a member of the commission, but as a, you know, want to help out with a particular task, you know? Want to help raise money. I don't know, whatever, whatever the, the circumstance is on. I got concerned about that last week, thinking, wow, this may actually hamper.
I think that's a really good point, Councilman. So thank you for bringing it to our attention. And I think, um, Roger, are you saying that they can be appointed? As volunteers?
I, I think, um.
I, is it that if we nominate, if we vote on them, then that's where the sunshine law comes in. But if they're, if it's not something that's presented to the board, it's just added as. Uh, a member of the committee, unofficial member of the committee, then.
So I think if a member is being appointed to the Centennial Committee. Whether they're a voting member or a non-voting member, they're going to be subject to the sunshine law. However, and I will have to iron out maybe the details on how exactly we can do this, but we could create a fact finding task force perhaps. That could make findings of fact, right? That are not making advisory recommendations to the board, which is findings of fact as to. Um, matters of the Centennial, uh, celebration. Um, I'm not sure exactly how that might look at right off the top of my head. But that's something that we could sort of create. It would almost be a, it would be a separate body. But one that's not subject to the sunshine because they're not making recommend or advisory recommendations to the board.
I don't think people are going to want to just be fact finders and not be able to contribute. Um. I think that. Uh, I think that what we should do is just be very purposeful about who we nominate. And then have them be subject to sunshine law. You know, some people bring a lot to the table, which is why. I think that we just have to be, be very purposeful about who we nominate going forward because you don't want to. You don't want to bog them down by, by nominating so many non-voting members that. You know, but, uh, but I, I think, I think doing a task force to just be fact finders, but can't. Really give their strong opinions or recommendations, I think works against us. And so, if I may. If, if I may, so, um, a, and this is what's circling around in my mind, right? Having been involved in. Groups that recruit volunteers to help in a variety of things. The commission has a, an event, um, the circle or whatever, and they get volunteers to. You know, come in and work and, and say how we should set up the tables and all that. And they, those, they, those individuals have to be told by someone, right? And presumably someone is on the commission, right? So they're a volunteer. Um, and, and so that's why, that's my concern, um, that, uh. Uh, you know, again, we're asking a group of people to take on monumental tasks really over the next three years. And what kind of help we can provide. I see volunteers helping with that, but that may not sit well with the sunshine law.
Well, let's listen to what Roger has to say.
That's, that's, that's just my concern.
And I think your point is very well taken, Councilman. And Councilman Fahad, I understand also your concern. Um. I also just want to emphasize, there's nothing preventing folks that want to get involved in the Centennial Committee. From attending the actual Centennial Committee, uh, meetings and participating and providing suggestions in the sunshine. To the Centennial Committee Board Members without having to be board members. That might be actually. One of the best options, right? To let folks know, hey, if you're interested and you want to provide input. Go to the Centennial Committee Meeting and provide your.
And ma- mayor and council, just to. Add on to what Roger was just saying. I think that, and, and I'm hearing that you have. Member, members of the community that may have a special skill set that can contribute to the Centennial Committee. There's nothing to say. That you can't have a specific person with a designated set of skills. Present and be added on to the agenda for one of these meetings. And they don't need to be limited to the public common time. They can provide their input as a member of the public, present and. Move on, um, without being an actual committee member and then restrained by everything in the sunshine law. So that's also an option for you to consider.
Through the chair.
All right. Thank you, Heidi.
I just want to be clear. You can't have volunteers be part of a committee.
As actual members of the committee, right?
All right.
Appointed.
Let me be more specific. Okay. Um, Julie gave us five committees that they're forming. Right? They divided up into five committees.
Correct.
Can people be recruited to help with that committee?
So if you mean as appointed as members of the committee and.
It's a volunteer.
As volunteers to just present, to provide information, I think that that would.
To actually work.
Right.
Okay, I'm clear. I understand that. All right.
Your permission, I guess, right now, I think we're in the right place. I mean, this thing is going to be. Evolving and getting bigger, bigger. And I think with the advice of Julie, the chair, asking us if they need more. People and on there and we make a decision at that point, but at this point I agree is we're fine and there's no need to.
I'm clear.
Add or do anything else unless needed. And they'll be the first ones to tell us if it's something that we need to add members.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um, let's move to twelve F.
I'm going to, your permission, Mayor, uh, and Mayor, I'm going to defer to our workshop meeting.
Okay.
Okay, that's the reality. It's tied to that.
Okay, sounds good. And that'll be on June fourteen. Okay. Um, all right. So we move to reports from our esteemed city's attorneys, Roger and Heidi.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I don't have any report unless Heidi has anything to add. It's been a great, uh, evening with you all.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor and Council, Mayor and Council, good evening. Um, I, I don't have a specific report, but I do want to. Just congratulate William Alonso, our city manager on a tremendous career. I am honored to have been able to work the last six, seven years with him. Um, as, as, as attorney to the city, but working alongside him. It has truly been a pleasure. Uh, Mayor, you, you mentioned, um, I think you said that William is a very honorable person and I absolutely could not. Agree more with that statement. Um, William is a class act and it, it really has been a pleasure to serve with him. And I, I, uh. I wish him lots of happiness in his retirement and I hope he travels and eats and drinks. And does all of the fun things that you can do, um, in health and surrounded by his family with lots of love.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay. Heidi, excuse me. You know what? Read my mind, not what I'm saying, I guess. All right, um, our city manager.
Thank you, Heidi, for those kind words and, um. Uh, I have to say the same thing about you. It's been truly a pleasure working with you, uh, all of these years and, um. But we'll still be in touch and I want to, I want to see the pictures when the baby's born. You can, you can text them to me. I'll, I'll be able to get text.
You'll, you'll answer those texts? Okay.
He said he would get them.
Even when he's home, he's going to be saying, on a trip, on a trip.
I just wanted to thank everyone and, uh, council, all of you, um, and I'll just leave you, um, with. The words from my letter back in February at the end that I only wish the residents and the city. The very best going forward. And it's been a pleasure for me and God bless all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, William. Tammy, do you have anything?
I just wanted to remind everybody about the Memorial Day event on, uh, May twenty ninth. Uh, at nine AM at the War Memorial, the first block of Curtis Parkway. And of course, I'll talk to William during the week.
Okay, and our city council will start with our vice mayor.
Well, I could relate with, uh, Adam Mayor, uh, articulated about William. Uh, I know I can't do better, but, uh, definitely been a pleasure. A little time that I'm here to, uh, be able to serve with you. Shame, I've always seemed like I worked so hard to get up here and then all of a sudden you're, you're leaving. And, uh, but, uh, no doubt about it, uh, you're a person that, uh. Has self, has served this community well and, um, and, uh, has a great open policy and I'm. Realizing firsthand and, um. You're going to be missed and I wish I had a little more time with you to, to get more, uh, accustomed to this process. But thank you for the time that you have given to me and you've always, always opened the door, even as a citizen and resident. So I appreciate that. Definitely going to miss you.
Well, I guess this is a, a final closing statement as city ma- uh, city manager. I just want to say thank you for all of your help. Um, I hope you enjoy your retirement. It's new beginnings. Um, I hope that God continues to bless you with many, many years of health and happiness. And, um, I, I'm also glad that I had the chance to serve and, and to work next to you. Um, I was able to get to know you a little bit while I was building up my house and little did I know that I'd end up one day working with you. And, and you're the same guy, very clear, very transparent and, um, you're a good man. I just, I really, really wish you the best. In your retirement because you really deserve it.
Councilman Fahad.
Um, so William, again.
Um, so William, again, uh, the loyalty and commitment to the city that you've shown is, is, um. No one could argue against that. We feel like you have an unquestioned legacy that you're leaving behind the city and, and like we've said at, uh. At previous engagements where, where we've honored your service, uh, where, I think you said a best mayor that we're, we're better off. For having had you for these seventeen years with us, your leadership has, has brought us to this point and we couldn't have done it without you. So thank you. Uh, I also wanted, I'm going to take this opportunity. So I was sent by, uh, local residents, uh, a little press release. About the Miami Springs Virginia Gardens, uh, under eighteen girls soccer team that apparently, uh, went to the Florida Soccer State Camp, uh, and they. It was in Auburndale, Florida. Uh, the team is affectionately known as the Blitz and they, uh, they won two to one against Treasure Coast United. Uh, Gio de La Rosa is their coach, uh, and they've, uh, the, this is something that hasn't happened, uh, in quite some time, I may to understand. And, uh, they're going to be moving on to, uh, regionals, I believe. And, uh, I, I know that. Some of the parents, I'm, I'm looking at the pictures and they're phenomenal. I know they're going to be posted, uh, in various media outlets, but congratulations to that. Uh, girls, uh, eighteen U soccer team for Miami Springs Virginia Gardens who, uh, continues, uh, forward with, with the regional tournament and, and they're going to. They've done a great job of representing us and wanted to give them a shout out.
Councilman Vasquez.
Um. At the, um. At the cocktail that we had, um, about a week ago, more or less. Uh, I said a number of things. I think that, um, I, I thought about saying it when the scouts were here and when the, uh. Um, the students from Miami Springs, uh, were here because, um. What I would have told them is that. You are a person to emulate. Right? Especially young people who are looking for guidance in terms of, uh, civic, uh, civic duty. Um. Capabilities. And, and as you said, after I said the words I said, uh, at that occasion. I also mentioned the fact that you're a veteran. And that, and then you added that, um, while you were serving our country in the United States Army. You had the opportunity to attend school and prepare, prepare yourself professionally, right? If you had not done that, we wouldn't be saying goodbye to you today. And so, um, what I would say to, to them is that, you know, the scouts have. An oath and they have a scout law and you're honorable man and trustworthy. I'm not going to remember all the details, but that. You are someone they should emulate in terms of living their life. Um, as the mayor has told them, working hard to the young students who got the awards. Uh, but also because, um, the scouts in particular live by a code, girl scouts and boy scouts. And I know that that was formative in my experience as a young man. And then I joined the military and, and the, the structure and the experiences of that. Um, you know, have may contributed to who I am today. And so. I honor your service to our country and I honor your service to Miami Springs. And again, I would just tell people, you want to be like somebody emulate William Alonso, uh, my. Uh, my contacts with you initially personally went through my son Victor. And I know he's, he's very appreciative of the interview you allowed for him to, to have for his, uh, one of his, uh, boy scout merit branches. And it had my opportunity for me to learn more about you. And I appreciate it always. Truthful. Straight to the point, you know, no nonsense, right? Just the facts, right? And, um, and I've always appreciated that I could call you whenever I have questions like I did, uh, today. This, these are the things, right, that have happened. So, um. You know, uh, the next city manager, whoever it is, is going to have some big shoes to fill. Um, in the meantime, you're going to have your feet up. Somewhere, whether it's fishing or on a cruise, I think you mentioned, and, um, it's been a true honor, uh. William to have met you and, and to consider you. A fellow veteran and a friend. And I, as a, as a, as a, as a grandfather, you know, I can appreciate. What you're doing and, and, and I wish I could have that kind of contact and my grandkids are all over the country. So I have to go flying to see them. So. Mi amigo. Mucho honor. Let's salute you, my friend.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, I just wanted to, uh, bring up a few things. The hurricane plan, our city's hurricane plan, Tammy, we'll be getting that soon. This hurricane season starts. Okay. Um, and I want to remind residents to please, you know, be. Have your own plan, you know, we, we need to have a plan. Things, you know, no matter what we think. We have in place, just make sure that early on, you decide where you're going to go, or if you're going to stay, or what you're going to need to do, um, you know, and have it, doesn't have to be written down. But plan out for these, um, hurricanes and other natural disasters. Um, sometimes when they, they come upon us, uh, there's very little. Ability. We used to be able to, the luxury of saying, oh, you know, it's three days or one week or something. And lately we're having. Um, disasters that just happen upon us very, very quickly. Um, swim lessons at the aquatic center. I just want to, and I've said this, um, other summers. I feel very strongly that no child should grow up in Miami Springs without learning how to swim. We have so many pools, we have so many waterways, canals and lakes throughout the city. And we have an aquatic center that provides swim lessons. So I want to encourage residents, if your children don't know how to swim, to please sign them up for the lessons at the aquatic center. If you have a problem with, you know, the fees, please reach out to any of us on the council. And we will find some way to sponsor you, someone to sponsor you so that, um, your child can take the classes. That shouldn't be a deterrent for a Miami Springs resident. Um, to not, um, have their child signed up for swim classes if, if that's how they want them to learn to swim. The other thing, um, I wanted to encourage the residents with the C Click Fix app. We have this app. That's available. It's something that we've had the past, what, six months, I think, or something in the fall, we got it in. It's an amazing tool, a way for residents to, instead of having to call to report something to us or someone else, they see a problem. They can take a picture of it, submit it through this app, it goes to the correct department and then, um, they'll get a status. Some things. Can't be fixed or some things aren't, um, within our ability. It's, you know, it's a county issue or it's a state issue. We can tell you that it's been referred to someone else, or we can tell you that we're waiting for the parts on this and that's why it hasn't been fixed. But you get some feedback, but the residents are really our eyes and ears on anything that concerns you throughout the city. Give us the opportunity to know about it. And to let you, um, you know, see if we can resolve it, if we can, and if we can't, to tell you, you know, why it can't be, um. You know, what the issue is or why it can't be resolved. And, um, with that said, um. I, I think I've said it numerous times with William. Um, I can, I'll just end it with saying, thank you, you'll be missed. It'll be hard to look over. To that side, um, even though, uh, it will be able to see wonderful. Tammy is our interim city manager and, and she's extremely, um, uh, very, very capable of running our city as she has numerous times when William's been on. On vacation, but, um. We'll miss you. Looking over to the right and not seeing you in that position. Have a wonderful retirement, William. You certainly deserve it.
Thank you.
Heidi is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.